Mr. Vice Chair, do I understand we're calling the meeting to order at 2:03 PM?
Yes, we're calling order for a meeting, yes.
First item on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda.
You want a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second, uh, did we have a?
Not without Nicole.
Yeah, not without Nicole.
So do we need to skip this section for now?
Yeah, I mean, let's, I think we ought to use the time and get feedback whenever we can.
Okay. All right, well, um.
So, uh, just shooting right down to 3.2?
Yes, I'd rather do this one first.
Yeah, let's do that.
So, so I, when I put this together, I actually did some research on what's typical in ranking, capital improvement requests, I used ChatDPT Plexi AI, I looked at their references, and this is how I came up with it. And then I looked at the rankings and how important do I think it is to the town? And that's really where I want your input. Are these criterias appropriate? And are the rankings appropriate or recommendations on those?
I don't have any better suggestions, but I do have some questions that might, um, when we talk about legal mandates and compliance, I, you know, depending on the mandate or the having to comply, in some respects, that might engender a higher ranking, not that I'm looking to give it a higher ranking particularly, but I just want your feedback or your thought on that.
So we could give it a higher ranking. One of those things is maybe it's a legal mandate, but maybe it's in five-year terms. Maybe we don't need to do it next year.
Okay.
So we might, it's like the MS4 projects, we have certain criterias we have to meet, but we have like this 10-year span to meet those criterias and we have to meet them in sections.
Okay.
So maybe although it's a mandate, it might not be as important as if there was a mandate at the wastewater treatment plant. Well, there are two different funds, but, um,
Still, um.
That need to be met earlier, um, like it's the, um, we have the lead pipe replacements. We have some time to do it, but we eventually will have to do it.
Right.
So we could, and all this equals 100%, so if we add one place, we have to take it away from another place. But I guess it also depends on if it's the severity of that mandate and that should be in the explanations.
Right.
And then it could.
I can, in other words, in my mind, I could see where that would kind of override some of the others, even though
Yeah.
But common sense would have to come into play is what it amounts to and not necessarily the numbers.
Yeah, well, the other thing is in the instructions, I specifically put, this is a starting point, but then we go through and we look at what are some underlying criterias that would actually push this project further? And that could be one of those areas where we say, okay, yes, this is a mandate and it's only weighted 15%. But this mandate is required in, say, a year. It's a, it's a health issue. So we're gonna rank it up higher based on those other criterias. But it's a starting point on what projects do we look at? Where is the pile that we're gonna look at this year? Or over the next five years compared to what can be put off longer?
Okay.
So if you did want to increase the weight, uh, because we do want to be compliant, where would you take it out of?
Oh, I, I don't know. I, I'm not anxious to do that.
Okay.
It's just, I wanted to bring that up because it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. In my process, I have bullet five. So once everything's ranked and they're sorted by the highest and lowest, then the, we review the rankings and make adjustments based on other factors like urgent needs or equitable distribution of funds, those type of things. And a compliance with the legal, that would be one of those urgent things.
Right.
Yeah.
Another note that I made and, and maybe working through it would, would do it anyway. But are there any disqualifying conditions? Uh, let's say there was some disqualifying condition for the project in a particular category. How would you boost the weight of that? I guess is, um, uh, what was I thinking about? Oh, I, I've forgotten what I was thinking about, but you know, uh, well, we weren't ready to do it, you know?
Well, if we're not ready to do it, then it shouldn't be in this capital improvement plan. It can come in next year.
Okay.
It's not, this is gonna be reviewed every year and requests are gonna come in every year. We're gonna build out at least a five-year plan and that's gonna change. And we're gonna reevaluate that five-year plan every year.
Okay. Okay, in other words, since we're locking things into categories, I was, you know, wondering if.
Is there another category?
I don't have a better way.
Oh.
Let me make it clear.
I try to think, is there something I forgot about that we need to consider?
I mean, I didn't, I think that all of these categories for me is, is fine.
Yes.
The last category, project feasibility readiness.
Right, that's.
So for instance, uh, if I want to do a project that has to be done in year five, then me as a department manager would say, well, we're not ready yet and now I'll just put a one there. And that would lower.
But it also, but then next year we can revisit these and then they could, yeah. And if the project meets, is ranked highest, because also in the form is, when is this project? There's a five-year, um, uh, option. When is, how long, when are we gonna start this project and when is this project gonna end? So that if this might be a project that doesn't start till 2028 and maybe we're not there yet, but we could put it in our capital improvement plan, but it's not gonna go in our capital budget until 2028 and it's still gotta go through this process anyways, if we're gonna put it in our capital improvement budget.
Is it possible to say, okay, project A would be FY 2028?
Hmm, yeah.
Right.
So, oh, I should give you the sheets.
Your FY 20, I think you have another sheet that shows.
There is, there is a worksheet that has, okay, who's submitting it, department, project manager. Describe the project. Is this a new? Is there some updated? When are we gonna start the project, the end date? Where's the funding gonna come from? What the cost is? Is there an impact to operating costs? Is this gonna generate any revenue, which is, most of these projects never do? And then it, then there's the ranking.
So this is just the ranking part of each project.
Yes.
So the other sheet that you have that shows when, who, how?
I can send that to you guys.
In a database somewhere.
I, I can send it to you.
We just pull out. So, uh, next year's capital?
Yeah, I plan on keeping these all together. I plan, and let me know if you have any suggestions. This is what's going in my head. So I'm going to create an Excel book for each department. Each department will have that sheet and then underneath that sheet on the same worksheet is the rankings. There'll be a ranking for the department and a ranking for the finance committee. And then each, each asset's gonna be a new tab. So we can go back and visit those tabs each year and update. And those are what we're gonna put into the capital improvement plan. And what's for the current fiscal year, which would be, this would be FY 26, would go into the capital budget. That, that's my idea. We'll see how it works out.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
I think that's, so sometimes if you're doing department, department, there is no instance where a capital item would be requested by department A and B?
There could be a capital item that would benefit both departments and that would, it would depend on where it goes. Well, let's, okay, here's a good, security cameras. This one's been up a couple of times. It will benefit both the police department and the public works department. But these security cameras are gonna be affixed to buildings and properties, which is gonna go into the facilities, maintenance and whatever, it's facility maintenance department. So the police may be involved, the public works administration might be involved, but we're gonna budget it in the facilities department. So it'll be in the facilities department request. It could be requested by the police department and but be in the facilities department budget. So there, in my sheet, I have a request by the department. That doesn't mean the person requesting has to be in that department. Yeah. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that would split between, actually be split between, and there would be. So a vehicle, say that they want a vehicle and it's split between the four enterprise funds and one at, say, parks. Then that would be, maybe we stick all those in like a public works administration and say, anything that gets split amongst multiple departments, those go into this workbook. Trying to think if there's any, because I don't want them to put 20% of the truck for one request, another request for 20% of the truck, another request for 20% of the truck. I don't want that to happen. I think that might get things confusing. What's your thoughts?
Do you find, do you find that an allocation of capital assets is more of a burden?
Yeah, I've been, yeah, I've been trying to think how we could do this. And one of the things I've been thinking about is putting all public works vehicles in fleet and have everything go through the fleet and then do a year-end allocation for the cost, kind of like we do with the overhead cost to the enterprise funds. So like the utility billing coordinator, she's under finance and we budget her on finance. But all of her functions support the enterprise funds. So I allocate her cost to the enterprise fund and have a transfer from the enterprise funds to the general fund. So there's an expense in the enterprise funds and a revenue in the general funds for her cost. And I'm kind of thinking the same way with the vehicles. Should we do it the same way? Where if the other funds are using the vehicles, maybe allocate that the same way? I'm not sure. I'm, I'm toying with ideas because it is cumbersome and having, because every time a vehicle gets repaired and it's, and it's allocated in to five different departments. Now we're putting the repair, uh, say, uh, because we don't do anything under $100. But if it's a, say, $150, now we've got five line items for the same vehicle. Yeah, it is, it gets confusing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm for against allocations because that is just more work. And I'm not trying to be lazy or anything, but you, you wanna, um, review that asset in its entirety?
Yes.
If you miss an allocation and you're not looking at the total cost, then that becomes a burden.
Yeah.
I also recommend that in each budget request, that there is some type of formula that's always reserved for capital assets for review or maintenance, whatever. So for instance, if you have a person, a new job, a new position, you automatically put in the cost, included in the cost is the cost of a computer.
Yes, yes.
Cost of, uh, even though that's, then that computer, whatever department is in charge of computers, they should have a, a ongoing percentage of replacement costs established in budget. So let's say the department has 100 computers. There should be a percentage, I don't know what percentage it is, but keep that in reserve for replacement of those 100 computers.
So, um, we do have a reserve for vehicles, we have a facility reserve and all this is in our fund balance. So we have a fund balance and then we have all these reserves. The one thing we used to, I stopped this last year, we used to do in our budget, do an expense to the reserve. I wanted to change that where we don't do an expense to the reserve, but do an allocation of fund balance to maintain this reserve at a certain level. So our, so when we do the year-end and the fund balance roll forward into unassigned, a certain percentage goes to these different reserves to maintain a level of these different reserves. What's your thoughts on that?
I think that's good.
Well, the reason I moved it by from expense, like this is really not an expense. All it is, is moving from the unassigned to an assigned reserve that we use.
You take this reserve part over here and move it over here?
Yeah, we have an unassigned reserve, unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
And then we have all these reserves. What I want to do is establish, yeah, we have an unassigned fund balance. And what I want to do is all these reserves that we have, the facility reserve, the vehicle reserve, um, the storm reserve, maintain a certain percentage in them. So when we do have a rollover for fund balance, say 500,000 and we need to increase 120,000, we automatically do that increase to maintain that reserve. So we have it to use later. And if we use it in that year and we don't have a fund balance roll forward, we move it from the unassigned and say, okay, we've got to replenish this so that we reserve it to make sure that we have those funds available for those purposes.
Further, further define your, uh, uh, assigned reserve. You're solidifying with every year, X percent goes.
What it's for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we used to have, the only one that's in ordinance saying that we have to do an expense is the facility, which I would like to change where we say, okay, we are going to maintain a 2% of the asks of our facilities to ensure that we have enough for replacement, something like that, that we put that. Yes, yeah, something like that. Instead of saying, okay, we're just gonna put 150,000 every year in the budget and expense it out and then move it to the reserve, because to me, it's not really an expense. It's just a reallocation of how we're using the funds. Yeah, so that's something I have on my list to establish to make sure we maintain. Now bear in mind, we have not used a lot of these reserves. We're probably gonna use the storm reserve this year for the first time in like five years because of all the storms that we've had. But that reserve ended up with a lot of money in it, more than it needed. So it's kind of good that we can finally use it.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's the, kind of the idea of that. Okay. Um, so anything else? So yeah, the, so the idea is that these worksheets get updated every year. What goes into the five-year plan will go into the capital improvement plan. And what's for the fiscal year budget will go into the budget, but we have to have a ranking to prioritize because we, we actually have a really good fund balance. The problem is all the projects I know that have been talked about, we don't have enough to cover all of them. And that's where the priority needs to be ranked. And also in the individual funds, there, we might be limited to how much we have and we have a whole bunch of projects. We need to know what's more important to fund. So, okay, is there anything else we need to discuss about this? Any changes, anything? Because I'm gonna start pushing this out probably Monday or Tuesday to the departments to start filling in.
And it, sort of, highest ranking number is gonna be five.
Yes, yes, yep.
So.
For a category, you mean?
No, for each.
So let me, um, actually, say that.
Put, uh, let's say one, a one in.
This is a five. This is a five.
Oh, oh, okay.
It'll be 4.5.
Say, this is a three. This is a two. This is a five. This is a one. I'm just making these things up. This is a zero.
Oh, okay.
This is a zero. This is ranked at 2.75 based on the weighted ranks and how you scored it. Because a 10% weight is not gonna be the same score as a 15% reward. Yeah, yeah.
And if we learn as we're going along, find out we need.
We can always change this. If we find this is not as efficient as we want it to be and it's not giving, guiding us to help prioritize, we absolutely can change it and.
I'm sure we'll pack it a little bit maybe.
Yes.
So really the, the weight, uh, to move the number around is gonna be public safety, legal mandate, the condition of the asset.
Hmm, yeah.
You know, can we afford?
Yeah, yes, yes. Those are the highest weight because if we can't, we can't find the funding for it.
Yeah.
That's.
And I think that's, I think you're spot on. You know, if it's legal, it's gotta carry weight.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, and it's kind of hard to like, okay, well, do we put public safety above a legal mandate? It is kind of hard to determine. They're two separate, different things. It could, it could not be a public safety issue, but the state's requiring us to do it.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Nothing you can do about it.
Okay, all right, so I'm.
Hopefully they'll give us some funding for it, you know, but, uh.
Oh, this MS4, the, the stormwater is, is, it's concerning because of the cost and I, I'm concerned about that one, so. But we haven't been doing, they, the projects haven't been going along as quickly as we thought they would. So we are building up the fund balance. So when we do need the funds for it, at least we have some there.
We may have made a mistake some years ago when we took on the responsibility for, for these subdivisions.
Yeah.
Whatever, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's now on us and now we gotta figure out how to fund it. Yep, yep.
It's almost bad as a pension thing. No, I'm serious.
That has to be a good analogy. I need a use. Because that's, I would can tell you, when I give you the recommendations to council, that's gonna be one of the things that they're gonna probably fire back on. But that would be a good analogy because yeah, we, we took on all these ponds and we can't even maintain them. We're having a hard time keeping up with them.
By the way, you just mentioned that in making a note. I, this is a new committee and there's no formal, far as I know, operation. Most of the other committees have a council representative that is part of that committee. And at least it was back in my day.
Okay.
And that councilman and sometimes even the chair of that committee would be the ones going before the committee, uh, the council requesting or presenting. I, you were talking about you going back and talking. I think that it needs to be our chairman or our vice chairman or somebody like that. But now story before the council, I don't think it ought to be on, on you and, um, you know, we don't have any tax to crime one way or the other.
To maintain the independence.
Which is, which is very important because I can go back to them and give them your recommendations, but your recommendations were the same ones that I gave them in the first place.
Yes.
So yes, having that separation would be very.
I've been thinking about it and, and I think it's important.
Let me, let me review the ordinance of this and see where we can probably get that. Because there's, there's a change that we wanted to make with the committee selecting their chair and vice chair instead of it being appointed by the council. So there's that change and then, um, having the chair or vice chair present the recommendations.
Yeah, and, and I don't know that, um, I don't even know in the other committees whether it was a formal in the legislation that, that created them, but that's the way it worked and it made sense.
Yeah, no, no, I think there should be because you guys are here to make recommendations, not just my recommendations, because they are, they hear that all the time.
And we don't want you being the one to have to carry it back to them.
Now, you're bringing up a good point because I was reading the minutes and, uh, I'm glad we didn't prove it, but at 457, very uncommon that the employer matches the 457.
We currently have a 457 with no match.
With no.
Yeah, so we have the pension and then we offer a 457 with no match currently. And my recommendation, because they were very insistent on allowing those with a physically demanding job be able to retire earlier than what the pension allows them. And that was the whole reason they wanted an additional pension to go around it was to, well, then make a contribution to a 457 for that so that they can make that choice to retire earlier and have the funds available to bridge between that retirement time and when their pension would start.
Yeah, okay, so, because that's really not common.
Oh.
The employer puts in a match for 457.
Well, I wouldn't think it'd be common because we already give them pension. So we already provide pension.
Yeah, but just in the 457 world, that is very uncommon to do a match.
Huh. All right, should, so we want to edit that?
What would we use then?
Then you would have to use the, I think for, um, I can't remember the numbers, but I think it's a 401 or 401B, I believe is.
It's 43B?
457.
There's a, there's a 401K, a 401A, a 4, um, uh.
I think it's a 401K.
But aren't some, aren't some of them designated for, um.
Police and firefighters.
Oh, okay. No, I was thinking there's some designated to government.
The 457 is.
Okay.
So we could not do, we could not do a 401K, but we could do the 403B.
Okay.
When I worked for the school system, they had a 43B and a 457. Yeah, they had it, but the 457 doesn't have an age limit. So the employee, once they separation from employment, they can then take advantage of those funds and there's no penalties or anything. It doesn't matter their age. They don't have to meet that 59 and a half. So that's why I would push the 457 for employees because we're looking at an earlier retirement age that allows them to retire and have access to the funds at any time.
It's not allowed?
Oh, it's allowed.
It's allowed, but it's very, very, very rare.
Well, we're a rare bunch, dude.
Sorry, sorry. Um, so, yeah.
Okay. I mean, that could be also.
If we can like.
Matching with a pension is not common. Say, okay, pension plus.
When, when, some years ago, I know they contributed for me for nothing. They didn't want to pay me for what I was doing. In other words, I was acting town manager for a period of time. And, and they didn't change my salary and it all, but they did make contributions to to the 457 for me.
Okay, I'm not saying you cannot do it. I'm just saying it's very, it's not common.
Well, the town's been doing, proposing things that are very uncommon, like an additional pension. That's, it doesn't even exist out there. And that's one of the biggest problems we're running into is the enormous cost because it doesn't exist and we have to build it. And then we have, have it contracted out by professionals to maintain it because we do not have the knowledge or the staff to do that internally.
Yeah, and I mean, that statement can be a good thing, right? Hey, we're doing something that's not common. But just beware.
Yeah, but there, there's a lot of like, even with the Maryland State Retirement, um, we still had, there's, I think it's Gatsby 68, it could be 38. I get lost with these numbers, but the auditors have to do a certain formula that we have to report on our financials. And really, I do not know all the ins and outs of that. And then we're gonna have to, with a new pension, we're gonna have to do the same thing for that one. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of concerns and.
Yes.
a very complicated thing to provide a benefit where we could do the 457, which is not complicated to, even if we did a match, because we currently have the plan. So, okay, let's get to these budgets.
Okay, what are we looking at first?
Okay, well, I think we left, I jumped to the PD and we might revisit that if you guys wanted to revisit that one because we didn't really talk about that one much, but.
Police Department?
Yeah, but we skipped. So I just want to make sure I left off on the right one. So we stopped at human resources. So IT, that one, they're actually still working on because I need descriptions here. This is based on what, so I put this budget together based on what we historically did. And I had a meeting with our IT specialist on Tuesday to talk about what do we really need? What services are we paying for? Can you expand on some of these? And he is currently working on that.
Is this under Police Department?
No, this is IT. This is on, I, so if you go to, let me, if you go to the general fund budget, I think that's what I sent you guys. And then there's admin.
IT, I got you.
Yeah, there's admin, then there's IT. So this budget still needs to be refined based on, do we really need these services? What are, what's inclusive of these contracts that I just kind of put in a base description based on the title of the contracts? So he is going to look into that. The the target was 344 and we're at 327 based on our current activities. Last year, we budgeted 341. I know that we had an, we added extra cybersecurity services. That was adding additional 30,000 on the services we currently have. So I'm not sure how I got to being less, but that is something that they're, he's working on right now. So this one might be something that we revisit once he's able to get me more information and do, actually evaluate the services and determine the need for them. I do think I, did I put any travel? I didn't put any travel in here for him. And I didn't put any small cap in here. So that one, unless we, I guess, once he gets that information and I can then forward you guys that budget. And unless it's over the target, then we can discuss it further. Legislative. So in here, the target was 499. And we're at 483. The majority of the contract services for the Civic Plus platform that we use. And that's at almost $26,000. And that's actually the only service they have in legislative. There is no other contracted services. The training, a lot of that is for the council and some for the clerk and the director of legislative services. So we have them. This year, we had departments list out all the trainings that they're planning to attend and putting an estimate cost on each of those trainings. Sometimes you can get them fairly easy because you can just go to the per diem through the website and put in the place and then you know what the per diem is. There are some very small capital items that they're requesting, replacement of a wireless microphone, some monitors, but the capital, the small capitals equating to $2,850. Trying to think. So the council salaries 81,000 and the salaries for the staff equates to 301,000. That's for two people, the director of legislation and the town clerk. And then there's a lot of trainings, most of that for the council. Is there any questions or concerns?
So taking a step back, right? HR is doing a study on creating a step.
It's in discussion.
It's in.
There really, there hasn't been a lot. It's, it's an idea that has been thrown out there.
So what is the feel of the, of that with the council?
It hasn't even gone to the council yet.
Hasn't gone.
The only people that have discussed it is me and the HR director.
So you think it's not necessarily something for this budget year then?
I don't think, well, it depends on how fast Monica could get something together, but I would rather us actually evaluate and make sure it's appropriate. And the other concern, when I worked for the school system, there were like three different negotiated agreements and each of those had different rates on the step, meaning if you were in the supervisors and managers agreement, it was 10 years to get to the top of your grade. If you were in the support staff, it was 15 years to get to the top of your grade. And if you were a teacher, it was 20 years. So we don't really, we haven't done that evaluation or what's appropriate for the type of position, the responsibilities, all that type of thing. It was just an idea that has thrown out there and I don't want to rush into something without doing the right analysis. I mean, unfortunately, the town has done that several times after getting a study back and just taking what it had. And that's what we did. There really needs to be an evaluation and analysis.
And you don't have time for it. I mean, not, not this year. I don't see.
I know, we don't, we don't. We, we really don't. But, I mean, with that said, also since they made that change after the study in '23, there has not been anything but a COLA given to employees and that includes the new employees. And those are the ones I'm more concerned about. Those employees that came in, that started at the bottom. The only things they've gotten was COLA. Everybody else was put on a 65 percentile. That means those, they were, they're making what 65% of people make doing that same job. There was no analysis on how long they were here, how much experience they came in on. So it, it kind of, that was rushed in and I don't want us rushing in, making those type of decisions.
Yeah. So the train is moving and if we keep doing what we're doing, there will be inequity issues.
Oh, yes, absolutely. So we do need something in place.
Yeah.
Yes. I just don't want to rush something in place and not do a thorough evaluation.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
The Maryland Municipal League, do they have suggested tables?
I don't know. I've looked. I have no idea.
Because, you know, eventually, everyone compares steps to other towns, you know? And that'll definitely be a public document where an employer, a future or potential employee would come and, and just evaluate that table.
Yep.
And say, okay.
And that's a good idea.
Yeah, be here in 10 years, you know, where would that put me?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we, hey, maybe, maybe let me talk to Monica. She's out this week, but let's see if, how fast we can get something together. I just don't want to rush it.
No, 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 I'm not saying for this process, no. But you do need to
Yes.
avoid the inequity.
Yeah. And my concern is some of these costs, because they did such, salaries went up over a million dollars within one year because of this. It's, it's a concern is how are we going to fit this in and afford to continue this?
Yeah.
So. All right. Okay. Any questions, any concerns with this budget? Any recommendations, any change?
Is, can you forward me that? I think I might have missed that. Because I don't have, I don't have.
I did a zip file. Let me see if I can find my zip file.
It's under admin.
Or was it?
If you open the general fund initially, and I might not be doing it properly.
General fund, and then there's folders, there's admins, parks, public safety, public works, and it's under admin. Yeah.
I have, I'm not used to anything, to be honest. I've been too long.
Right. Unfortunately, my mind, the way things I organize is based on our chart of accounts. I look at what, how, we're 100, 110, 120, and that's how I organize. That's one group.
Yeah, that's great.
So, I mean, we're moving along, but do we need to have a quorum too?
I mean, as long, I, you're only making recommendations. I think if there's a recommendation that we noted and then have a quorum for it, because I don't want to hold this up because this goes to the council, I want to say the 18th, they'll get this. And I want to have your recommendations to them prior to them getting the budget. Well, they, actually, sorry, they get the budget on, I think the 11th, they get the budget and then we have a budget discussion on the 18th. So I want to be able to send them the budget along with all your recommendations.
Okay, so the only thing I have is these five-year summary that you gave us, the five-year revenue expense. Unless I might have mistakenly deleted.
No, this would, this would have been after the, hold on, maybe I, I, let me forward the email, let me forward the email. Hold on. Actually. If I find it, this one easier.
Oh, can you put it up on a screen, maybe?
Yeah, I have them. I'm just, where did I put? I know, I, it's just if I put budget in, it's going to give me a whole bunch of stuff. I remember why.
Realize I'm not on the internet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, the only thing I'm working on is the
Here we go.
five-year, yeah.
Budget, no, that's, sorry, that's, that's a budget training that I, we've been doing. Oh, my goodness, where is? Oh, here we go. Here we go. I found it.
You got it?
I found it. Let me forward it.
Appreciate it. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Okay. I think that's right. Oh, it was in another email string. I didn't send it separately. So it's under revenue and expense reports. And in there, I just sent you the zip file for the general fund.
Got it.
Okay, good. So, yeah, if you open that up, there'll be an admin file and in there, we're actually on the last one, that's the planning one. And this is one that I put together too, because we do not have a planning director right now. So there's nobody that can plan out what we're going to do in this department. So I been doing and what softwares I know they're, they're using, like I know they use Municity, so I know that needs to be renewed or subscribed every year. And then assuming that because they're going to get a new planning director, there's going to be trainings that they're going to want to attend and reference material. So I added that stuff in there. And then since they're new, I'm assuming that they'll need office equipment or furniture. I don't know what the status of what's currently there. So I put in an extra 500 there. So under the contractors and services, there's the Municity, which manages their permits and issuing of the permits and billings of the permits. So that's the cost, the annual cost, the 16,800. I put in a thousand dollars of contingency because I'm not sure if there's something else they need. There's the plan reviews that they use and outsource plan reviewers sometimes. So I'm not sure how often they'll use that service, but I put that in there. Spatial is the GIS system and I know that there, that gets allocated partially to them. So that was put in there and that's actually put in there by Public Works, knowing that they're going to need that. Plan check, I just put in 90,000 because that's what we've been, these are all covered by fees. We automate those, the cost is supported by fees, so it's not supported by taxes or anything.
Manager of inspections talked about possibly being hard, right? Do we have a manager of inspection?
Yeah, we'll get to that budget.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, planning, even though the, they used to be, they actually separated out. So the inspections used to be under planning. Now they have a director of inspections.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's, that's always been a separate.
We're still fully using plan check.
Yes, yes, yep. And those are, that's, yeah, those are the plan reviews and they have their fee charts. So we take their fees and I add about 3% to it to cover our costs that we may be associated with issuing these so that it's not on the taxpayers for specific residents. And then I just put in contingency 5,000 for other contracted services because I'm not really sure what they need. I put in the memberships that the last planning director had, assuming that this one will want the same ones. And then I put in the trainings, some of the trainings that the last planning director went to. So I added those and then I added an other trainings for the new director because I'm not really sure what they're going to need. So this budget target was a 579. Of course, we have the 90,000 in program, which I've separated out. And the operating cost for this one is 551,000. And I believe most of that's going to be salaries. See, salary cost is 469,000. Sorry. 468,000. Any concerns, questions?
So I totally stepped back, but you guys ever considered just doing incremental budgets?
Can you elaborate on that? Because I'm not sure what you're asking.
Joe has a budget of $50,000. That's his base budget every year. And then you just ask for additional dollars.
Well, we do go and make budget amendments because people are over the, like, for the IT, because we added this cybersecurity, it's, it was 30,000. We didn't budget for that. I know I'm going to have to ask for a budget amendment. I was actually debating because normally we did budget amendments at the end of the year and just like, okay, this is what we need to amend so that we meet, stay within our code. But I was actually thinking about doing one mid-year because I know that I'm going to have to do a budget amendment for IT. I know we're going to be over budget because it was an unplanned cost. I also know that when I put together the Heritage Green, I based on my numbers on the report I got, not thinking about the monies that we already. I based on my numbers on the report I got, not thinking about the monies that we already received in escrow. And so I budgeted based on the report, which is not enough, because we were using the funds in escrow, so I needed to do a budget amendment, amendment to take those funds from escrows to cover the, um, interest payment that I didn't account for. So I'm gonna have to do a budget amendment there. Trying to think of anything else.
For Joe's fifty thousand, he has to just work within those budget parameters.
That is what we're supposed to do.
Yeah.
But it's not uncommon for, um, departments to go over budget, they just need a reason why. And that was one of the reasons for changing how we do the budget, and asking them to specify what contracted services they're doing, what trainings they're doing, so we can identify when they come back and they're over budget. We know exactly what happened. It's because you did X, Y, and Z, or you, I, you, you didn't plan for this. This is what you planned, and this is what's happening, this is what your needs, as long as they justify it, and then we come back and adjust the budget. But also, we have been, the other issue we have is, um, we are spending more than what's coming in. And right now, we've been safe, because we've been getting interest, and, I mean, FY twenty-four, we got just under, uh, um, one and a half million in interest. If we didn't have that, we would be dipping in fund balance. And that's for operating costs, not for, not for capital. Um, and so, that's my other concern, is that we are spending more than what we have, that reoccurring revenue that we can rely on, the real property tax, the income tax, because we can't rely on the interest. That's gonna go down.
So if the idea of having a control on expenditures, if Joe's fifty thousand dollars, let's say he needs an amendment
Hmm.
for another twenty thousand, so would his base budget in the next, in the following fiscal year be seventy?
Yes.
Would it revert back to fifty?
I, so, since we don't have a baseline, because nobody tracked anything, nobody, there was no justification, there was nothing with it, so the more questions I asked departments of how they came up with the budgets, well, that's what we did last year, so that was what we put this year. There was no planning, there was no, I didn't have any, okay, this is what we did last year. What are we gonna continue doing? What are we gonna plan on doing? What do we not need? There was none of that.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm trying to encourage them to do. I guess, I didn't think of it that way. Is that a good way to approach if, say that he started with fifty thousand, and that was the base budget that we planned, but these items came, came part of it? Do we increase it to say seventy thousand, or do we say, okay, well, your base budget is fifty, justify the need, continuing need of these services to have that base budget?
So Joe would have fifty thousand dollars, and that's his base budget every year, recurring every year. He has to manage within those budget parameters. If there is a budget amendment, then we collect all the budget amendments throughout the year for Joe. And we say, okay, was that one time, was that an anomaly? If so, then it's not going to be part of his base budget next year. But the, but let's say two out of the three were recurring costs. Then you just take those two out of, two out of the three, and just increase his budget by.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to do here, that's why I have them putting in the, I have a five-year, uh, here. So on here, there's five years, because the idea is saying, okay, what do we need this year? Do, is this a recurring cost each year?
Yeah.
Um, so like on the police, you'll see the pension, the creation of the pension plan under professional services, well, that's only for one year. But the maintaining of that pension is continuous. So that one would continue over through the five years. But yes, that's what I'm trying to get them to do in here, so that we can identify them, but that is probably a good approach. I didn't think that far ahead either. This is all brand new, um, and it's brand new to the departments to actually plan out their activities, instead of just taking what they did last year, and assuming that's what they're doing this year. But that's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think, because the issue here is that the cost is going is, is increasing faster than
Yes.
So you need, we need to find mechanisms to slow down, or?
Well, I, I think the one, the, part of this exercise was to make departments think about what they're asking for. To evaluate, this is the contract services I use. Do I really need to use these? What's the purpose for them? And the one thing that I'm finding is everybody has their own asset management. Finance has one, Public Works has one, the PD has one. Well, we need to get together and talk about what do we need, what, which one is, can serve the purpose for most of the different departments and just use one, because every department actually has access to our finance system. They can't do anything in there. Unless I give them permissions, like submitting a requisition, they can do that, so that we can issue a purchase order, they can approve invoices, but they can't make any changes, but they can view all the data in there. They can run budget reports, they can look at their expenses, they can do all of that in there. So, but yeah, that's a, that might be a good approach for next year, okay. This is what you specified this year.
Yeah.
This is, and then we can look at, okay, well, what was the actual expense for each of these budgeted items? And are we gonna keep on using them?
Okay.
So yeah, that, that would be, but yeah, I didn't really have much of a baseline to work with.
Yeah.
Because nobody had, when I started asking about, well, what was your plans, or, um, how did you evaluate this asset? There is nothing, it's just a line item.
Okay.
So yeah, it's but, but this one I had to put together, and I basically, for this one, I use historical information, but also the assumption, knowing that we're gonna have a new director and what they might need.
Okay.
Is there anything else we need to discuss about this one?
Joe, you good? Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go to, um, parks. All right, ignore the community events. When I divided those out, because there were two people working on them, we're just gonna look at the community promotions one. I ended up consolidating them.
I look at the community promotions.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so, with this one, I actually have the target separated, because there's the events target, and then there's the community promotion target. And the community promotion as a whole was, well, without the events, was seventy-four thousand, and with the, and the events were, um, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. I believe we are we are within that, we actually, under that. Um, but there are some requests they have, um, in here, so I'm actually gonna go to the contractor. She, there's not much for community promotions, they are asking for some, um, Christmas decorations to be installed next year. There are some beautification, or keep the plate of beautiful, that's counts five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. There's other supplies, that's six thousand, um, for different public events, um, for beautification.
So last year, they spent two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Is that right?
Last year.
I'm looking at the four twenty, right, community promotions?
Hmm, so, in FY twenty-four, the total for community promotions was, they spent, um, three hundred and five thousand. Of that community events was two hundred and thirty-five thousand. We've got the newsletter that, um, was twenty-eight thousand, and then the rest of it are different community promotions and, um, beautification within the town. So the bulk of it actually is to, um, community events, then, and the newsletter. The events, actually, um, the events coordinators, um, isolated all the events, so she has each of the events here, and what the cost will be for the rent, the contractors and the supplies, and any licenser, or any grants issued, so she has them all separated out here for the cost of each event. And that's the amount that we, um, pulled over into the contracted services, and anything in purple came under, um, the community events, or, yeah, special events came from the sheet listing all the events that we have, and the cost for each of those events.
Do we have a new community events coordinator?
I think there are, an offer has been put out, yeah. Um, and they are asking for a trailer, um, to hold Christmas decorations, um, and that I believe is for the Christmas tree that they put out there, um, in the middle, over the clock. Um, they had it in this year's budget, but they don't anticipate purchasing it this year, so they moved it to the next year's budget. They're asking for it in the next year's budget. I think that's the only capital. There is, um, a thousand dollars to get colored lights for Town Hall, that they put in this budget for beautification. And then we have the events, the actual events are costing like a hundred and thirty-five thousand to host all these events. Now, also, the farmer's market, that's fee-supported, so, um, we recoup the cost of offering the farmer's market, and we budget it thirteen thousand eight sixty-six. I will go in and look at, um, basically look at how many, um, vendors do we have, the fee that we're charging, will that fee cover that? We increased it, I think, like fifteen dollars last year too, because based on my calculations, that's what we needed to break even.
So you treat it as an enterprise fund?
No, it's, it's part of the general fund, but we charge a fee for it.
Okay.
So I just make sure, because I don't want the residents' taxpayers paying for this, the vendors pay to be able to sell their product, that I make sure the fee will cover the cost of offering that. So yeah, the major, the larger costs are really the, um, events, special events, and the newsletter that we send out quarterly.
Joe, you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
You good? All right, parks. So, let's see, the parks, the target was two ninety-two, um, and they are at make sure my numbers, oh, two fifty-eight. Um, and so, let's see what they have in here. The payroll is a hundred and sixty-six, and that is from the allocation. We don't have any employee one hundred percent to park, but the Public Works employees are allocated to parks based on how much we anticipate them to maintain the parks. Let's see, that the other contract, so under other contract service, we, um, have a contract with Millwood. They're the ones who maintain the, um, cutting the grass for most all of the areas, except for Town Hall. We have a separate contract for that, which we're actually gonna put out for bid, within probably the next few weeks, for, to maintain the flower beds, the mulching, the cutting, where the other, um, like Tillman Lake, um, Will's Park, it's mainly cutting the grass, um, so Millwood has a contract to do that. There's the pest control, which is a small amount. So the majority of this is the, um, the Millwood contract. And that's at Tillman Lake. And then there's Will's Park. So those are the two areas that they cut the grass. And they're asking for a chainsaw, some weed whacker, so they're asking for twenty-five hundred in small cap for that. Other than that, there's not much electricity, I calculated based on, um, the average of the last two years, and then the twelve percent increase, because I read Smeco is looking to increase us eleven percent, so I put it as twelve percent to be safe. Yeah. There's no, other than the Millwood contract, there's no specific contracted services that we do. Any concerns, questions? Most of them either are at the target, below the target, or very little above it. There are a few that are, well. Okay, public safety. So, emergency management, that is really the, um, alarms, the tornado sirens and stuff. So, I, we have, um, a service contract, and depending on how much we use that service contract, depends on how much it costs, so I just increased it the two percent, I believe, and just left it at that, so it, the target was nine thousand one eighty, so that's what I left it at.
Come out and test them all.
Yeah, yeah. But if we need additional work, it could cost us more. So the contract's not the nine thousand. I'm not really sure what the contract is, but if we need additional work, then what does meet in the contract, then we have to pay for that, and that's why I keep a little bit more in there. But of course, if we go with your suggestion on the interim budgeting, we would only budget for the contract, and if we need additional service, we would then do a budget amendment. Is that how that would work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because you, you know, you, you have to hold the managers accountable.
Hmm.
Like, Joe only has fifty K, and that's his world, you know, he has to work with that. You know, that's either, he has to make a judgment call.
Yeah.
You know, what to minus in order to do what he has to do.
I get what you're saying, but when I even put this out, there was a lot of grumbling on why am I asking for this? This is a lot to do. So it was very hard, because they're not, the department directors weren't used to basically evaluating what they're gonna, their operations. They were just taking historical data and just popping it in and saying that's what it is. So, even though, I'll use the police as, because I keep looking at the uniform budget, I'm cringing, because we used to do twenty-five thousand year over year, and suddenly it just doubled.
Yeah.
And now it's like sixty-five thousand. Well, I want to know what's going on.
Yeah.
Why is it there? And getting that information is proving to be very difficult for them. Like, but you need to tell me why we were spending twenty-five thousand, and now we're spending more, and then because you spent more this year, you're gonna assume that that's what you're gonna do next year. Uh, we can't continue that pattern.
Right.
But I do like that idea. It's too late to incorporate that, but that might be a good way to start next year.
Next year, yeah.
Because I'll have a listing for the, most of the departments of what they want. Now, the police department haven't gotten me filled in all the sheets. I'm hoping they get me all the sheets, so that I have something to work with and evaluate, so when we come next year, I could put that idea in there.
Yeah. So using that example, he has fifty K, he needs money for his uniforms. That is a one-time amendment, and then, or it could be a recurring amendment. Then you take a look at all those amendments you did throughout the year, and then these are the ones that need to be added to his base.
Okay, um, how often did you do an amendment, or how often? How often did you do an amendment, or how often did you bring amendment to council to approve? What would your recommendation be if we did it, if we approached it that way?
So based on, I don't know, the laws of the township, but for the public school system, they had 13 categories. And so if you have to stay within those categories, and if you don't, then that's when you go too forward to the council
Okay.
for a budget amendment.
So we actually do it by department.
But then it, it always reverts back to the original number, to, to the original base.
Okay.
So Joe's 50K will always be there, 50K.
And then
It's just that one.
Yeah.
Last year, we had to do that for his, for his.
So, but if it's a reoccurring, then we would adjust the base. So say that he did something, he asked for 20,000, but 10,000 of its recurring, so now his 50,000 would be 60,000.
And so that recurring, that's what you put down as a budget request to the council. And then the council say, okay.
Okay.
It's approved.
No, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Uh, well, baby steps for these people. I will
No, understood.
I will get them used to this and then we'll, okay, let's evaluate what you did, what you planned, what you did, and let's get a base for the next budget.
But you doing the right approach and that you're looking at historical and then you're giving them, okay, based on historical, this is what I think the base budget should be.
Yeah.
You take, you know, then you just run with it for the year and then you see how you're doing. But you, they will always know that you have $50,000 to play with.
Yeah. And I think that's where we really need to get the, the breakdown of contract services, uniforms, all of that. We really need that breakdown so we can determine the base, because right now, I really don't know what the base is because they, it's, it's just been whatever. Like the Public Works, I was able to do their uniforms and figure out their cost of the uniforms, because we have a contract and there's a listing of everything they need. So I just took that amount, that's what we need. We have vacancies, I used that contract amount to determine what cost would be filling those vacancies. But I can't do that with the police because we have no contract. And I, I, when I set up, well, when we get to there, I'll show you how I set up the sheet. But um, so is there any concerns about with this one? Okay. Inspections. So
We still under the admin?
No, no, we're in now, we're in, we're in public safety.
Public safety, okay.
Yes. So we're in inspections now. So in the file, there should be public safety, the folder public safety. It would not be in admin, it would be under the FY26 general fund.
This is the file I have, right?
There should be another, so if you go back, where's the email?
So be under.
Go up, hit that, maybe that will get you out of there and go back. Okay.
Public safety.
And that will give you, and then
And then inspections, yeah. Thank you.
So public safety is probably, or inspections probably went up, yeah, it did go up, the budget, the base budget went up because they they changed the inspection manager to a director, director of inspection, so the salary line went up. Go up. Maybe not. No, it didn't go up. Oh, I know why it went up, because never mind about that. So other than the salaries and miscellaneous things that they need, that they have a truck, they actually have, I believe, two vehicles there. So I estimated the fuel based on usage, and then I increased it. I took the average over the last six months and I increased it by 30%, just to be safe, knowing fuel can be fluctuate so much. So the base was 288 and they're at 286. One of those things is because they want to get some type of monitor for grease testing, which is $1,200. The only other thing that I increased, I increased our inspection services from 250, which is what I budgeted for FY25 to 400. We are already, as of as February 7th, we're already at 490,000. So I increased that at 400,000.
What is this?
That's the plan check inspections that we get, we recoup the
We're getting paid, I mean, we're getting revenue.
Correct. We are getting revenue for that, yes. Yeah. So and that's why I put this program-supported line item, because I don't want, we used to have it all in the operating. I don't want to put that amount in our operating costs that are being covered by our taxes if we're having some civic activity covered by a fee that supports that activity. So I, I added a new section, which I called program slash supported for those type of things.
So FY24, the actual is 285.
Yes, correct. Yes.
You adopted a budget in FY25 of 293.
Yes.
And they are spending as of January, 186.
Correct. Well, that's really as of, say, January, because even though I ran the report on the 7th, that doesn't mean everything was entered in. Actually, I know that, well, that doesn't matter because that's down here. Yeah. And since payrolls, the majority of this, that I know is updated. The insurance has been completely paid, so.
So for payroll, do, do you encumber salaries?
No, we don't.
Why not?
Because we haven't set it up that way. When I worked for the school system, they did.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I prob, I mean, I could set up an encumbrance in our system for it. Because that would tell us, I mean, even with the budget, I mean, we budget it based on the position or the employee that's in that position, and then the COLA and any vacant positions, I budget at 15% above the minimum and assume that they would do a family coverage. But no, we don't. We do have a column on our reports that have an encumbrance. I just need to learn how to put that. I know that if I do a PO, it will put that encumbrance in there.
Yeah.
And then once we pay the PO, the encumbrance goes away. But right now, we monitor it based on the budget and what the actuals are.
Okay. Okay. And so the request you're saying is, their request is 286?
Yes, that's what they're requesting, 7,000 less than last year's budget. Now, part of this
Is that?
Well, part of it is because I'm actually having them, well, there's not much to list out, let's see. Overtime, they're decreasing by 500. The salaries have decreased. And those salaries are pretty accurate, because I'm taking what they currently make, adding the COLA in, and that's what it is. See what else decreased? The liability went up because they got a new vehicle. Or sorry, no, they got a new vehicle, but that's right, that's right. See, that's not in that number. Fuel's going down. It's a few, I mean, materials, they don't have anything in that budget item. Dues and memberships, they don't have anything in that line item. And I don't think they have any dues or memberships that they subscribe for. Supplies. It went down 500, part of the reason, they only spent 2,100 now. That went down, the fuel went down. And part of that could be, I mean, right now they're at 32, and I know that's up to date as of, so that would be through January.
So fuel is going down because maybe the price of fuel?
No, probably the usage, I mean, yeah, probably the usage, because I looked at usage, I actually looked at gallons being used, is what I used.
Okay.
The actual gallons being used. Yeah, there's just certain things that just decreased because they aren't meeting it. I mean, you look at the telephones, they're at 103. Wireless, so we reduced what we originally had in the budget for some of these things, because they're not they're not, they don't anticipate on this.
But the director of inspections is new title?
Yeah, there's director of inspections, and then there's, there's another employee, what is his title?
Is there a new hire or is that a promotion?
That was a promotion.
Okay, is that Aaron?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Oh, I don't know what Mitchell is. He's something inspections. Inspection something. So there's two employees in this department.
Okay.
Yeah. And I actually probably think I put these numbers in based on their usage, on what they're doing. Well, they do have something for dues and memberships, so let's put at 100 there. But that still doesn't put them up much. Do you have any concerns about this budget?
I was just kind of wondering if a reduction.
It could be because their other budget was padded, because all they did was look at last year's and just bring it over. That's what, from my discussions with department heads, that's pretty much all they did. There was no analysis of budgets. I'm, this year is the first time I asked them to look at what they're actually doing. Let's see, what did he do? I mean, let's see, they were 285, they spent 285 in operations on FY24, 186. That, that's probably a new employee. Yes, that's wages that went up for FY24 compared to FY23.
You okay, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Okay, let's go to the police.
What's next, the police?
PD. Okay, so the police budget. The target I had was 5,132. Their budget last year was 5,174. Part of that decrease was because I wanted them to start managing their overtime. They don't monitor it, it just keeps increasing, so I wanted them to do an analysis of that. They did do the contracted services, so in, under contracted services, they have their services they need for in-car computers, reporting, this is actually tracking. This is what they said they can use to be able to evaluate their uniforms and other calls, monitor that, so that's part of, that's like an asset management system. Then they have their document system, that's where they keep all their policies. This looks like a dispatching Police One Academy online training, meeting CLIA, this is part of their, I guess, their CLIA drones, licenses, software and stuff. They have their specialty IT person, which we're actually trying to figure out how to weed off that specialty IT person, use our new IT person. Because our new IT person actually used to be a police officer, so familiar with that type of operations. The other professional services are what I calculated based on the discussions of the pension. So this amounts, I'm, I'm estimating it's going to cost us 100,000 to build the plan based on all the items that had been identified, services, professional services we need from some of the vendors that we talked to. I did put it as a percentage of benefit. So what I did is I took the number of years earlier retirement years that they have, the increase in the benefit and the weight on the pay scale to determine how much Public Works needs to pay for this plan and how much they need to pay for the supporting of the plan. And based on that calculation, the police benefit this plan at a 94% rate compared to Public Works. So point five, oh, was it five? 5.9% I put to Public Works and the rest to the PD. And then the second amount is the amount to maintain the plan. The, all the services we need to maintain a pension system and payout benefits and monitor it and determine do everything you need, attorneys, the reporting for the auditors, all that. They're asking for amounts for a grant writer. Their audit for their what they call it.
Evidence.
Yes, their evidence storage, yes. The lease on the vehicle, that is something else that I've discussed with them about getting that reduced, because we do have a grant that uses the same lease company and the cost is $200 less per month.
And what are we leasing?
An undercover vehicle.
Oh.
Leasing vehicle, yeah, we have two of them, one through the grant and one that they do. Yeah.
Why do we lease them?
It's, I would actually, I want to look at leasing vehicles instead of purchasing them, but I can't do an evaluation because I don't feel like I have the data, the right data to do it. But yeah, it's just something, one of the reasons is because they can rotate it out so that they don't have the same vehicle undercover.
Oh, okay.
That was one of the reasons why.
How long is the lease?
Uh, we just keep renewing, it's month-to-month lease.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can change it. Yeah. Then miscellaneous maintenance. And then ammo that they want to get and coursework with police supplies. The uniforms, they did not fill out this at all. This I actually built for them, and I took everything that was listed on their forms of what's assigned to an officer is what I have here. And I just wanted them to fill it in. So I still don't know what their plans are with uniforms, what, who has what, how many is assigned. I have no idea of that. They say they have the information, but they haven't been able to provide it. The training, they do have the employee recognition that we do for every employee. the employee recognition that we do for every employee, and some other community outreach. The memberships and dues that they have, they list here, but their training, they did not list here, and actually, when I was going through AP, I found a training that they're going to have in September. So I added that training in here and asked them if they could do the same thing for all the training that they're planning to do. So the numbers that they have, they just pulled historically, this is what we did last year, so this is what we're going to do this year. I'm actually asking them to evaluate their training and plan out. They do have a coordinator for travel and training, so they should be able to provide that information. So I am missing pieces in here, and what's been filled in? Some of these, they have just overridden the formulas in here, also the PD events. So I did, I actually updated this based on what they asked me to update so that they can fill in, so I'm still waiting for those amounts to be updated. But one of the amounts, so the they're over the target of 242,000. Part of that is because the overtime I did not put in here because I want to manage it and also the pension amounts that we have added in to cover what they're looking at.
They're over 242?
242,000, but that's because they, they've included overtime, which I took out because I wanted them to assess their overtime.
Okay.
So I took that out and said, tell me where you need the overtime, and so they still need to get back to me on that. So they just plugged in a number of 220,000.
Okay.
The other thing is the amounts for the pension, which is, which totals just under 160,000.
And of course, if if there by some miracle, they didn't pass the pension plan.
That wouldn't be in here. That amount wouldn't be in here, because actually in their salaries is a 10% of their salaries for the pension contribution. So I mean, last year they, their budget was 100, or their operating portion, which includes the startup cost of 500,000 for the pension, which we haven't done this year, so I put it in that for next year. So they were at 1, 5,174,000, and their operating budget for this one is 5,303,000, so it went up 129,000. But it does have that pension amount in it. But there's also a lot of costs in there that I want them to think and evaluate on. And I actually think some of the contracting services went down in the costs for these. So if you look at like some things, if we get rid of, ignore the pension and stuff, that amount, they actually, they've decreased quite a bit of the normal operating cost by 47,000. Their other non-payroll operating costs, if you avoid the the pension, so almost 50,000 in operating, general operating costs that would be reoccurring is no longer in here because now I have them listing exactly what they need.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we still getting fuel from the county?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that went up based on their usage of the vehicles. So that went up a little bit, $12,000 is what I'm asking maybe that to be. Now, there has been talk about taking away the take-home program, take-home cars for the police. I don't know if it's a great idea, but it would save a lot of money if they didn't have commute outside of the town, home and back, back to the town. Because there are some that are 50-plus miles from here. I just don't know if it's a great idea to do that. So, other than, is there any concerns, I mean, other than having incomplete information? Because we don't have anything, I don't know how to track the uniforms. And the training, I have no listing of that and no listing of their events.
Think that's 129, it's good, I guess, I mean, I don't, I don't see I don't see anything.
Now, I'm hoping they come back with completing these sheets that they did not complete and that we can trim out what we don't need, but I'm kind of skeptical that they're actually going to do that.
So you're
They have more management than anybody else, and they can't get your budget.
Well, they just don't want to do it this way, they want to just take the historical value and say, this is what we need, just add a percentage to it and not be accountable for how they're actually spending the money. And now yeah, all I'm trying to do is let, give, tell me what your plan is so that we can budget appropriately based on what you're actually need and then hold you accountable for what your activities are, that's but there is no holding accountability. It's always been, oh, this is what you want, this is what we'll give you, but we can't continue operating that way.
No, because these, I mean, these expenses are moving quickly upwards.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, if you look at it, I mean, we were, that was before the pay increase, and then when they had that salary increase, this, it went up almost, what, 1.7 million from FY22 to FY23? And then another, what, three and a half?
Three and a half, and then adopted budget?
Yeah, then that, that adopted budget does include that 500,000, but even if we take that out, that's still like, what, 600,000?
Yeah.
It's, it just keeps growing.
Yeah.
And then this one is now 5.3. And this is why I wanted them to really think about what they're doing, and that's why I wanted these sheets filled out so we can see what's going on.
Hang on, they're gonna come up with something. I hope you get support.
Well, you guys can make a recommendation that they can change.
Okay. Okay. So that's the revenues, we're expecting that to be about 10% increase, right? For taxes?
I did a 7%.
7%.
Yeah, I did a 7%, but when I did the 7%, I'm not accounting for new buildings. I, I got the report over the weekend from the county, I just haven't updated it, so I need to go in and update it. But even with all these targets, if everybody met their target, we would have 147 and a surplus. However, we also have the capital budget. And do we want to say that, I'm just throwing out numbers, 10% of our revenues go towards capital improvement before we start dipping into the fund balance? Something like that. Well, if we use all of our operating revenues to cover operating costs, then we start having to dip into the fund balance to cover the capital costs.
Well, I mean, fund balance, I mean, I guess we, is, when you say fund balance, we just looking at the unassigned, correct?
Correct. The assigned, they're, they're, they're not restricted, but they're assigned to
Yeah.
support certain activities.
Okay. I'm just, the salaries just to me seems, I mean, we're
Bear in mind
we're reducing it, that's
The salaries, let's see.
You're reducing the salaries.
Am I reduced?
By 117,000?
Hmm.
118,000? 4%? Am I looking at the right?
So the salaries, so we have the sworn salaries and that actually reduced by 3%. Part of that could be because of some turnover, I know a couple officers have left, and so we have those vacancies. So I will put the vacancies at 15% above the men, and those officers that have left could have been making more than that, so that could be the reason why. Let's see, the health insurance went up considerably, and I know why part of that health insurance went up. We had several officers that had life qualifying event changes and their insurance increased, and since the town pays 100%, that cost goes up. And then the two vacancies that are in this budget, I put at assuming that they're going to have family coverage because I have no idea what they're going to do. So that went up considerably. The overtime, they put 220,000 in here. So that increased 4%. We took out the merit and bonuses because that line item was actually for cell of leave and sick leave incentive bonus, which we no longer are doing, so that's completely out of there.
Okay. And that's it?
Yeah, let's see, health insurance went up now, the, in the, the matching part went up 35,000 because last year I only budgeted 6%, but as we learn more about this pension and the cost of it, 6% wasn't going to cover it, so I increased it to 10%. And then, of course, the 500,000 that was going to come from fund balance to, that's the startup cost of this pension. FICA, did I do this right? Yes, okay, I just want to make sure I captured the other amounts in the FICA, did I capture? No, I might have done the FICA wrong. Actually, it's going to go up because I didn't add the overtime in the FICA amount. I need to calculate the 7.65% FICA down here.
Civilian salary.
We have three civilian employees.
Okay.
We have one person that I guess is I don't know exactly what she does, but she's a coordinator. She, for the police, then we have somebody who manages the travel and training, and then we have somebody who manages the evidence.
What does CLIA stand for?
That's some certification that the police want and to maintain it.
It's a national recognition, well, not a recognition, but if you have a CLIA certification, you've gone through many steps to certify your standards.
Okay.
To, you know, a lot of police departments probably, particularly our size, I guess, or smaller, don't have a CLIA certification. I don't know, I, I don't know what the
We used to get a discount on our insurance having it, now we don't get the discount anymore, that stopped a couple years ago, yeah. Yeah. Oh, this photo enforcement, that's, oh, no, I did put it in there, okay, good. I was going to get a concern, I did put it in there. But those are program-supported, the parking and the photo enforcement. Of course, just because they're supported doesn't mean we're making revenue on it. I have a concern with the photo enforcement, I think that's going to end up costing us more than we really thought it was going to be. And the net is not going to be a net, a significant net revenue at all. Then we have two officers at the hospital, and they cover 62.5% of the cost of those officers, but I put the whole amount, yes, I put the whole amount of the officers in here. But we do get some revenue, we get like 135,000 to cover that 216,000.
So when all this is said and done, are you going to be giving us a revised budget that shows everything?
So I was, the plan was to have you guys make your recommendations, and then I was going to the town manager and the council and say, okay, this is the department's request, and these are the recommendations of the finance committee. That was my idea. And I probably will present it as, okay, this is what the department recommends, and these are the line items for each of those, and then underneath, this is the changes that the finance committee is recommending to happen and the net effect on the budget. At least that's what I was thinking, if you have a better idea, I'm open to ideas on how to present this.
I, I mean, okay, I'm new at this process, right? But I thought that maybe our committee would be more of a macro, right? Suggestions of, of the contract attorney. The purchasing, right, bidding, controlling costs, the 457.
Yeah.
The the details, I think it should just be, this is what the departments are requesting.
No, that's fine, because the first two items would not, I mean, necessarily have a budget effect unless a decision is made. And then there could be a budget effect. But yeah, so, I mean, like with the PD, would there be anything, I mean, the pension, your recommendation would be, hey, let's do the 457 of the pension, so the effects on the budget, if you, if they went with a 457, would it be a decrease of almost 160,000? That kind of thing. Yeah. The other thing is, well, the uniforms, well, I don't know what the uniforms were. We've, we, like, you can see in 2022, they were 25,000, that's kind of consistent year over year, and then suddenly, the, they went to 111, and I know part of that is because they had five new officers, so yes, that kind of makes sense, but it should have gone that much? That's over four times?
Yeah.
So that's kind, and then it maintained at 54, then it went down to 54,000. And so they requested 52, well, I want to know, why are we up this high? You got new officers, you suited them up with a whole set of uniforms, but where's the cost of maintaining those uniforms? Because we're not, are we replacing them every year? I have no idea, because I have no detail, I don't know what's going on. And that's what I'm trying to ask for them, so how do you get, and they had this a lot higher? They, they decreased it when I started asking questions, but they still didn't give me the detail on, well, how are you getting this number? How do you know this is what you're going to, how are you monitoring your uniforms? They say they are, but they can't relate it to this.
That's where I think, you know, when you, when you add a police officer, it's automatic that you add money for uniforms and computer.
Yep.
And car and all.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, and I, I'm, I want to work on a sheet for that, and I know what they get assigned because I have a listing of what they're assigned, but I don't know throughout the year, are they repairing uniforms, are they replacing, how often do they need to replace? Is there a lifespan for those? Is there officers that were assigned a uniform three years ago now set for a replacement set? I have no idea, and they aren't providing that type of detail to track it, really, what's the cost? What are we planning to do this year with our uniforms? Because it is a cost that has gone up significantly that we should understand what's going on that caused it to go up that much.
Right. Right. Right.
Okay. So do you guys want to make any recommendations about? Any recommendations for the police?
Get some more information in there.
More, more analysis of your expense trends?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is, yeah, these, these trends are going up way too fast.
Okay.
To me, it doesn't, it doesn't. I mean, yeah, I understand five additional police officers, but.
And that's, yeah, and I I get it, but was a hundred and eleven thousand, well, let me take that back. It's not a hundred and eleven thousand. Forty thousand was for specialty equipment and gear and stuff that they use for ARPA funds. But the problem is that gear expires, and now, two years later, they need to replace it. And that right gear that they purchased two years ago is now expired. Now they want to replace it. So we need to know, well, how much are you replacing that we actually used ARPA funds for that were not general operating funds, and now you're making it operating funds? So that would be also, that's another reason why we should have this type of information, them tracking about, okay, this is what we have on hand, this is what we anticipate needing to be replaced based on. What the, I guess, the employee or who's ever tracking it, because they do have an, um, I believe they have an officer that's responsible for the uniforms. And they say, well, we keep it all tracked. We have, we know what's in stock, what we need to order. Well, I need you to show me what you are gonna plan to order based on. What's been assigned, what's in stock, whatever you're planning. So we need a more analysis of the trend cost is increasing. Significantly. Okay. And I don't know what their, their cost of. Travel is because that one, it's all broken out, so it's, okay, so last year. Their travel cost was thirty, or twenty-two, it was thirty-five thousand. Then it went to fifty-one thousand. Then it dropped down to thirty-nine thousand, and they budgeted fifty-five thousand in this year.
We say, if we say, Karina.
Fifty-eight thousand.
FY twenty-two, we had X amount of police officers. This is their total cost, cost per police officer.
Yes.
In FY twenty-four. It should be the same cost per police officer.
Yes, you would, you would assume so, yes.
Yeah.
And I know we had.
Then if you're adding police officers, then, then that's understanding. But uh, it seems to me like FY twenty-two cost per police officer and FY twenty-four. Cost per police officer.
Me, hold on.
I mean, even, even if you subtract inflation, it's a.
Let me, uh, I'm gonna just do some quick math here because I know how many officers were there. So if we take out, well, no, the small cap needs to stay in there. So, let me take that. There was twenty-two, I believe. We still have the same. So now, in the last year's budget, so the cost per officer, because I know there was twenty-two, was one forty-eight, a hundred and forty-eight thousand, and then we added five. So now the cost per officer is one fifty-four thou- for a hundred and fifty-four thousand, and this is not including the. Uh, vehicles or anything, because that's not in these numbers.
Yes.
And then we have, um. Then we have, and we had two more in FY twenty-four, and the cost went up to one fifty-six. And then in FY twenty-five, we did not add any money. It still stayed there, and the cost went to a hundred and eighty thousand. And then for FY twenty-six. Gonna do it over here. The cost is now a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and part of that is that pension bit.
So one eighty-eight. Most two percent, two percent increasing every year?
I wanted to do. So it increased three point nine percent, then one point two.
So three point nine, one point two. That's.
That's not right.
That's roughly, that's, that's okay as far as uh inflation is concerned, I guess. But prices usually don't reflect. Those inflationary things that is significant if, if we're in the contract, right?
Well, that's another problem, is it's hard to get contracts. Like, I've been asking the um police, you use several vendors for your uniforms, can't we get contract pricing?
Yes.
There has been no traction on trying to get a contract pricing from their vendors, at least on their end. I don't know how much I should start interfering because they get very upset when I start poking into their business um to get to. Start inquiring on contract pricing. The uniforms was one that I asked for them to get contract pricing on because the um Public Works has a contract pricing. So we know the cost of each of those uniforms, and they, the only difference between the, there is a difference between the Public Works uniforms and the police uniforms. The police buy their uniforms. Public Works technically rents their uniforms, and basically they cycle them out, cleaning them because of the type of work they do. We aren't making them clean their own uniforms. Or even trying to set up a facility to clean some of their uniforms. Um, so, because they deal with the chemicals and. Uh, wastewater treatment and sewer pairs and stuff, we don't want it. So there's actually a contract, service contract that provides your uniforms and cleans them and everything. Where the PD, they buy their uniforms, and then they bring them to get dry cleaned at a local dry cleaner. Um, there are, um.
I guess.
There's a difference in cost. Oh, already four o'clock, are you kidding me?
Yeah. So.
Oh.
Is that the announcement?
Yes, it's, it's a.
We didn't even get the public works. Oh, gosh. Okay, let me um get more detail on per costly of the, I did that just roughly based on this, but let me get you more detail on per cost of officer. Because some things probably won't change.
Yeah. I mean, I'm finding it hard to get a grasp of these numbers because there's, I mean, I think what we, to evaluate this, we have to exclude salaries and benefits.
Okay, and I could put a line item in here to exclude the salaries and benefits.
And then just deal with just the operating.
Okay. All right, I will.
Muches. We would like to accomplish a lot this year.
Yeah.
I think.
So much.
It's gonna be tough to. Have a big effect on things. Because we're just getting into it.
Yes, yes.
I, I mean.
But, yeah.
We're, we're learning and.
Yes.
Uh, I think it'll hopefully be a lot more beneficial to you.
Oh, I mean, it is because I'm getting different insights or different ways to approach things, which I didn't think of.
We'll probably be disappointed we haven't been able to do more than.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
So you okay where we are so far?
Okay.
All right, so I'm gonna get you more information. Um, I guess when we revisit these next week, we'll start where we picked up. Hopefully, we'll get to the enterprise, which I will get you guys the enterprise funds, um. At least by Saturday, five days before the next meeting. Um, and then we can pick up on here. And I will email the chief and ask them an update on them filling out the forms because we need more information.
Okay.
Tell them the finance committee is kind of putting the pressure on.
Putting the pressure on, yeah. All right, motion to adjourn?
Move.
Move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.